Have a motion we reconvene?
To move.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor, please raise your hand. We are reconvening.
Okay, Haley, if you would put up the project list. All right, we talked last probably November in this room about projects. I'll spend as much detail on this as you want. We had our retreat at Callaway in February and talked about the priority of these projects. You gentlemen voted to do the bank head corridor at 3.2 million. That was about the amount of money that we thought we could spare for these beautification projects at this time. Erica and company applied for a grant and were awarded that grant and the money is virtually in the bank. You got PO, you can draw on it, so it's not something we're waiting on. So that was a million and a half dollars, so that reduces that 3.2 down to 1.7, obviously. Now, there's things that we are semi-committed to. You don't have to do them, but when there's grant money involved and other people in the game, it's good to try to capture that money. There's a green belt spur planned from Tanner Medical Center to downtown. This would also pick up the Southwire complex. The cost is about $900,000. There's a, we have a $200,000 grant, or is the cost 700,000? It's 700. All right, with the, so we're 500 in on that if you choose to do it. And there's a lot of people interested in that, obviously, because there's a lot of people that work in that general area. There's the Rome Street spur we've talked about. We don't have grant money for it yet, there may be some available at some point. I won't run through all of these. Now, we are committed, this is not an order of priority, by the way, except for number one is number one. We are committed to the storm water on Dixie Street at $300,000. And I told you when y'all voted on it, that could run over. And I told you when y'all voted on it, that could run over. Tommy, what's the latest numbers at 310? Okay, and there are things that can go wrong and that kind of works, so that could go up, but you're committed to that. We did the Central High Road Sidewalk at 40,000. That's why it struck off. Oh, all these other minor sidewalks, I don't, I'll talk about them if you want, but I don't think they're on your radar. Oh, and the, the Green Belt Spur from Alabama Street is a T-grant. And we, we think it's about, gonna be about 2.24 million dollars. We've got 1.4 million dollars in grant money. So the delta of that is what, 840,000? That will probably kick off next spring. Now, T-money's crazy. You're dealing with DOT, it could be pushed out, but we really think that's a go-to. You agree, Erica?
If we stay in, if we stay on track, if we all in schedule right now.
But, but again, these where there's a lot of grant money, we'd like to capture them. I want to talk about a few more that, you know, things that can come our way. We've got a major stormwater project problem around the Methodist Church, around Old City Hall Avenue, and I've got John Bass studying it now, and I, this is a wag. I threw 400,000 in here. I don't know if it'll do it or not, but we've done our share of projects like this. It's probably pretty close. But that may come your way in the spring. It'll take some time to study that. Oh.
Would that include that parking lot on Rome Street? Because that's right next to that, right?
It will be included in the study. Now, you tell me, what kind of work on the parking lot?
Uh, just, there's no curb at all on the front and sidewalk and everything.
We, that we can probably pick up without a lot of.
Or with the green belt spur.
A huge expense, yeah, exactly. So, so my question, and then we've, we've applied for a grant for the Maple Street Corridor. Oh, the number on Maple Street Corridor is stunning. It's $6 million.
And that's for phase one.
For phase one. The grant that's applied for, who knows we'll get it, is called a TAMP grant. That's a new word for a T-grant, but it's 4.2 million. We have not been awarded that yet. Oh, but just, you know, that's just another one to be on your radar. And then we put 2 million in here for a spur to Oak Mountain, and we've got no timeline on that, but at some point, we'd like to run a, a green belt spur to the Mill Pond, Oak Mountain Golf Course areas. Again, we don't have a timeline on that. We're not asking you to prove it tonight. Let me just go back up and ask you, this would be my recommended priority, but again, we work for you, would be to do Bankhead, and then it would be to do.
Phase one of Bankhead.
Phase one of Bankhead, right. Then to do the Tanner spur. At a cost of a half a million. Second. Okay. And then the stormwater projects we'll bring back to you when we know what they're gonna cost, but that's, that's our recommendation. I know Rory would love to do Rome. Y'all tell us to do it, we'll throw it in the queue. Oh, do you want it to be third?
My, my question is Tanner Stormwater, Tanner Medical Center. We talked about that a while ago. They had to, um, they have to redo a lot of their, um, site design and everything like that. Typically, developers, when people come in and redevelop property, they do the stormwater. And I know that's, um, a huge redevelopment. We talked about, um, doing. In our last discussion, in our council meeting, we were gonna pay for that stormwater.
You, you actually voted to.
Um, and it's up to 310? Is that what you said?
Mm-hmm.
Um, that spur there, they already have to put in a six-foot sidewalk along that whole strip.
They're putting in spur along that strip? So this is in a, this is.
This is our portion.
This is our, they're building Green Belt Spur along that whole strip.
Along Dixie, they're paying for it at their, at their expense.
We're just gonna tie it in from Croft Street back around.
Yeah.
Through their park?
Yes.
I think it's a great spur, like, like all of these, I think they're all good spurs. By thing is, when we, when we talked in Callaway, we talked about doing Rome Street sooner. Connecting those homes to town, connecting Hobbs Farm to town. Um, and I understand with grant funding coming through, um, timing is everything. Especially when, we don't wanna just start the project and, with the grant funding and then come back and try to complete it a lot later. Doing it all at once is probably gonna be cheaper, correct? Bidding it all at once?
Bidding, you mean Rome with?
No, Tanner, with the grant funding and the other funding.
Absolutely.
Um, but yeah, my, my concern is just knocking Rome further down the list after we've discussed that it would be something that would be high up there.
So where do you want it, where do you want it to be?
Uh.
Can't be one. It could be two or three or four. Where do you want it?
When do we expect the, uh, RTP funding to come in? Is it in now?
We, we contacted them last week and asked. They have, um, they've had some turnover in that position that, that manages those grants. They were supposed to be getting us the letter to let us move forward with right-of-way Eastman Acquisition sometime this week. So those grants are typically a little bit quicker to spend than say like a T-grant. It's a years-long process. Um, we've successfully completed, uh, two RTP grants, and typically they're waiting on us, if that makes sense.
Mm-hmm. I'd love to see the two, because I think, I felt like that's the way we walked away in their last, in, from Callaway with that being the marching order of, let's try to get Bankhead, and we ended up cutting a million and a half out of it because of Erica's great and staff's great work on that funding, or that grant application. Um, I'd love to see Rome Street.
Ahead of Tanner.
Yeah. But I think they're both extremely important. It's not to say that Tanner's less important by any stretch of the imagination. It was more just, this is where, the way we had that discussion in our Callaway retreat.
Not disputing Rome Street, but until we get the library settled, first thing, I'll just put that off till we get the library reconstructed.
Well, I think that it's gonna be on the other side of the road.
Yes.
So I think.
When the, when the library goes down and there's no activity dragging anybody up that way, do you?
Wouldn't that be the perfect time to be building?
Not necessarily.
If there's nobody, if there's a lot, a lot less traffic on the road, that's.
I don't think traffic's gonna, it's gonna calm down. There's no time to go have anybody at the library for a while. And you've got more insight into that situation.
You know, it's, it's a committee moving forward, you know.
Um, personally, I'd like to see Fire Station Number 23 property. That's more, to me, is more of a critical issue from where we are on, of Central Road. It's bad or worse than the one we lost.
And then, our idea there was, we'll do what you want, was to tie the property up prior to the new sploßed and then build it with a new sploßed. So at some point, we certainly want to.
I mean, I really think we need to look at the fires, our EMS side, and if we could tie the property up with, for that, um, I think that's more of a priority than, than the Rome Street Green Belt part, I'm sorry. Considering the structure itself and the position it's in.
I know it's inadequate and we need to rebuild, but we've had that on our longer-term planning sheet rather than a short-term for quite a while, based on staff, based on, um, fire leadership recommendation.
But with the growth we got going on the south side of town, it looks like we're gonna continue to have it on the south side of town. And response time.
I just think, we gotta remember what our priorities are as a city. It's police, fire, rec, in that order. And I hear you Rory, but to me, we always gotta remember the big picture. The big picture is providing those services of police and fire.
And I understand that. And what's been great is our fire's been able to keep response times up 440, even with, even down a, um, a fire station. So I commend our fire staff for that.
But now we've just got one dilapidated fire station, is that right?
The one.
One dilapidated fire station right now we need to replace. And that's a 500 on the land maybe, and another 1.5 on the structure.
Problem.
Um, I just think we need to really be looking at, I think that needs to be a priority going forward for the citizens, as much as the Green Belt.
And that's not up there, is it?
Yes, it's on down, it's on down on 24.
But that's not a priority list. That's, that's not one to 20.
No, it wasn't. It was just, it was the order y'all, it was the order they got put down when we presented them to you.
So what's the order of presenting Bankhead, Green Belt, Fire Station?
I don't, we haven't.
So, do you have any other fire station?
Or Fire Station?
I'll do what y'all want.
Straight into it.
How much money do we have?
Yeah, how much?
How much money do we have?
Think we have to spare?
Well, I think you got a million and a half dollars. I think that.
We, that grant?
They got that grant back, so that's what I think you got.
Well, I mean, the Bankhead is gonna be 1.7.
Well, no, 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 I'm sorry. You, you had 310.
After that. We've got 1.5.
So that's really 1.7 up there instead of 3.2.
Absolutely.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
So right now, we've spent.
Got 2400, 2.4.
Mm-hmm.
If you tried to lock down the fire station property, that would get us up 2.9. Leave us $300,000 for trying to do something with the flooding on, uh, Sea Hall Avenue and whatnot coming up on Stormwater. And that's gonna be about your money. You agree, or just?
Well, I mean, we'll gain more money by then, and then, of course, the 800-pound gorilla's a T-sploß. If it passes, you're gonna.
Do a lot of different.
But it'll be a year before you see any of that money. We're also owed some FEMA money, but I'm, you know, I don't, I try not to count on when that'll come in.
Let us know, it was what, two years ago that we ribbon-cut for the Green Belt? And we'd planned on building a spur each year after that, and we haven't built any.
Well, we're gonna put one in from.
Tanner.
Tanner. I just like, I'm just thinking, public safety and it needs to be moved up to this if we can, guys, I know.
You just gotta remember what our core functions are. And I'm not, I'm, Rory, you know I like the Rome Street. But we just gotta remember what our core functions are of the city.
And, and I completely agree. I think.
I know you do.
Uh, I, like, with, with the, that being a priority, like, I understand that. But I also understand that that was presented as a longer-term plan. Um, then the immediate need was not presented as such. Especially, yeah, especially when we got, when we just built another one, or a, a newer one in a better location, um, better response times from that location. And I know it serves a different area, but, um, it's something to think more about, I think, hearing from, um, what, maybe presenting what that would shift in terms of response times, in terms of, um, need over there? Because I didn't really see much of a change in response time between the fire station going down in the departmental reports. It looked like it kinda hovered around 440, 450, even down a station. Um, so I'm not sure if that, if it does shift, um. And how much it would shift then, building another one.
It would hit with morale tremendously.
Definitely, definitely.
I mean, now we got.
That, that building is terrible.
Now, we've got three goods and got one crew sitting in there, one that may blow down.
We gotta look, it will blow down.
Yeah.
So do y'all wanna?
Jimmy, what, what's your opinion on it?
Now, that area of town is growing rapidly, so available properties, kind of a big issue now. If we wait too long, we're gonna be able to get any thing in the right area.
I mean, I think y'all kind of, we kind, y'all kinda got hemmed up where you think it could go.
Yeah, we need to be in that general.
You gotta have a cross to get over, go north on 27 and south.
Right.
And Cross Street sections are getting away. I just think the EMS side and, uh, response for the hotels and park and the shopping centers and, like I said, if you go that way and you look at the, um, drainage issues we got, it's always been on Old City Hall Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, 10 years ago, guys, we were, had line pumps up in there trying to put the concrete bottoms back in the pipe, keep it from just undermining. And that's every bit of 10 years ago, when Charles Pope was still.
It was probably 20, because I've been here going on 15.
Well, Charles Pope, and then, and the city workers were up under there with a line pump, putting concrete bottoms back in pipes, because all the pipes had rotted out. And there's no telling what's going in there right now.
See, that 400's probably gonna be a bit higher than that.
Yeah.
I just, I had no way to know.
Yeah, yeah.
And the fact that they, some, whoever put it in scaled the pipe down, best I remember, instead of keeping it up.
It, it not only does that, it runs, you know, left, then up, then right, then back around. It doesn't, you know, there are shortcuts to be made in the system that, uh, it's, it's a typical higgly-piggly thing that got added to and added to, so.
Way back when, when, and that's when City Hall was down there, when all that was put in. But I think that's your money, guys.
So do you wanna go through the list, prioritize? Are y'all ready for that? Well, let me at least state what I heard that might be a priority, okay? So, again, I think Bankhead stayed at one.
Mm-hmm.
Number two is something you wanna consider. Number three is something you wanna consider. Number 24 is something you wanna consider. And 25 is something you wanna consider. Now, I hate to talk about 26 without Gerald being here, but let me just say that we threw $100,000 into his products and we may be back to you asking for more. It looks like right now, they, if we did them all, they'd be 316. I'd rather save that discussion for when he is here. But if we could just talk about items 2, 3, 24, and 25, and you guys prioritize that.
And that's not to say that any of the other projects are not a priority. It's just in terms of short-term planning.
Is there another one, Rory, you wanna look at?
Um, well, you know me.
Yeah, I, I have a five.
Just so you know, you already voted to do number five, so we're counting that in the available money that, that, uh, you don't, you don't have to take that out of your 1.5 million. We already accounted for that, so.
Yeah, because we talked, at that ribbon-cutting or leading into that ribbon-cutting, of doing one per year, one spur per year, and we didn't do one last year. We're looking at, from a capital project standpoint, over the last two years not doing, yes, we had the fire station, yes, we had some other things pop up, but in terms of building things that is outward-facing.
You said the money's gone.
We haven't seen anything that's really been.
What about sidewalks? Have we done? I know there's.
Oh, you've done what, 600,000 dollars with sidewalks, probably?
That's how.
I don't wanna exaggerate. Let's say a good half million is always running good. You're talking about repairs, yeah. And you've done, how much paving did we do, Jim or Tommy?
I don't know the dollar amount. Last year, a couple hundred thousand, I think.
Oh.
Because of the weather, and it does not give on COVID, and we, and the project.
The influence Maple Project was 600-something thousand, so. So we're building a lot, but it may not have the sex appeal of a, of a spur.
Correct.
And who did we? I don't want to make a commitment, but who, who, when did we say that, to who, we're gonna try to build a spur?
Yeah, I mean.
I think that was just a, a goal that we, we talked about.
An internal goal?
I mean, I was there, but I don't recall that. I don't view that as public policy. That was whatever statement.
Oh, no, I don't mean it's a city statement made at the.
Just a goal?
Yeah.
Yeah, goal.
And, and things, goals shift, you know, year after year, based on what's occurring. And I, and I understand that. I just think that, um.
Well, the T-sploß money could be used on that, couldn't it?
Yeah.
The question is, do we get the T-sploß, or how much do we go out and lobby for the T-sploß?
Well, it's, I mean, I hope it passes for our sake, but I really hope it passes for the county's sake. It'll do so much for them.
Well, let's not counter.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't wanna put all the eggs in that.
Excuse me.
All right, so what's number two?
I'll say Tanner.
Well, are you okay? Two staying where it's at?
Two staying where it's at.
I'm okay with it there, as long as. I'm okay with it there, as long as Rome Street comes before the other two.
What about number three?
I think it needs to be the fire station, minimum.
Fire station, number twenty-four?
That's just property purchase.
Property, I don't.
Yeah, he wouldn't build a station that we do the, till we get the next splod. All right, did I understand then twenty-four will become priority three?
Well, that's what Walt wants.
That's what I'd like to say, I mean. I don't wanna get any ill-feeling started with fire, but who's getting stuck at twenty-three? On twenty-one, twenty-two, or jam up Red Row?
What would be the timeline on actual building it, though?
Jim, when do we, splod begins at twenty-twenty-one? Sometime in that front top, right?
So we got, we got a few more years to build feelings.
If you get grants on the Greenbells, we can always come back and look at them.
And I think that's what we'd like to see on all of them. But we, it has to be a priority, though.
Well, if I'm gonna pick a Greenbelt spur, it'd be Rome, not.
And I, I've made, I've said Rome, too. You know I've said Rome over West Georgia, so.
So the question is, Rome Street before or after the fire station? That's where we're at, the property.
I guess property, it comes down to timing on that, too, is what is actually available and things like that.
We could go by, I mean, we couldn't buy it tomorrow, but we could have you property, we could have you a contract by December. You know, we could have appraisals done and, you know, due diligence done on, on properties by then.
And being down that way, other than Tanner Mercy, right across the street, basically. Jimmy, how many you think, how many folks you think might be stopping in, small medical, down that way?
Two, three a month, I would guess. That's our second busiest station now.
Second busiest station? It's twenty-three.
Because it's a project you were doing. It's not built yet.
Prioritize it?
Oh, you don't have to. You, it's, it's above one. You've already voted for it.
Did you just hear what the chief said? Can you restate what you said about Fire Station Three, twenty-three?
Uh, they're the second busiest station now, right behind headquarters. And their file volume continues to increase due to the population in that area.
How much county cooperation did we do off of that one versus?
That's part of our fire services agreement.
Yeah.
And we, that station goes all the way to Lowell Road, then Highway twenty-seven.
Goes Lowell Road?
Yeah. So they have a pretty big area.
And if, if the need is grown over there, when was the last time that negotiated, was negotiated that agreement?
Uh, last two years ago? The agreement's very good. It supports a, that entire station. That agreement was formed in the seventies with that idea in mind. The county, back then, pretty much paid for all the people in the station, there was twelve people. And we paid for fire apparatus, the building, that was our part of it.
And the county owns that land, by the way, so just in case you think, well, that's a lot we can sell, that's county property.
That, that was a real strange agreement. There's not a lot in writing, but that's what happened.
It's worked, though, hasn't it?
Yes, worked very well for thirty-five years. Yep, almost forty. And the money we're receiving from them is pretty much what it should be.
All right, so number three is Rory wants Rome. I heard Walt right. She's number twenty-four, buying the property.
You can put me in there.
For the property?
For the fire, for the fire station property, yeah. So it's Bankhead, Greenbelt, Spur, Tanner, and Fire Station, and Old City Hall. That's what I would like to see. And that uses our money.
That's pretty much wipes us out.
Would you save, would, would you save City Hall?
The Stormwater property, yeah. Because it does flood there a lot.
And for the sake of the public, oh, just know, this is a priority list. They have to vote on all these projects when they're built. So don't think they're, they're voting in a work session tonight. They're not. They're giving us general guidelines on where to go. But when these, these projects are done, when the money changes hands, they have to vote on that. So that'll be a, a voting meeting when that happens.
Yeah, I'd definitely like to see Rome on there, just because we've been talking about it being, you know, this next year, this next year, this next year, for the, since I've been on council. As a discussion, no promises been made or anything like that, but it's definitely a point of the public's been wanting to see it. From, and it's not just my ward that wants to see it. Hobbs Farm is, you know, one of the main parks in town. Being able to connect that to the downtown, I think is extremely important.
Well, is Ro, can I ask a question about Rome Street? I guess Erica. Is that gonna be a typical ten feet, or what's the width on Rome Street?
We're trying, that's what's on Rome now, is ten. And that's what we're looking at, as far as a, kind of a street cross-section, to be a ten-foot trail, just like it is on Rome right now.
How much you gonna get in, out of the right of way coming up to it?
Uh, we're, I can't give a definitive answer, just because it's not designed, but what we're trying to do is stay inside the right of way. There's going to, at a minimum, be some construction easements we're gonna have to get.
So we're gonna have to cheat back into the road some, you think?
We'll do a, a road diet, just like we did on the north side of Rome. What we did with, on the north side of, north side of Rome is we stayed in the right of way. We did a lane reduction, road diet, and we were able to get everything that we needed in the, in the existing right of way.
So it'll do a calming effect going down Rome Street a little bit.
Right, it'll hopefully slow down traffic. I know it's pretty hilly and there's some places where folks go too fast, probably.
Rory, would you mind putting Rome Street into the fifth slot, and if we get a grant that we can work off of, possibly move it up later on?
So after City Hall?
Yeah, I'll put it number five.
I'd like to see it before City Hall, moving forward. If you look for a grant for City Hall, I don't know, is that a FEMA-type thing?
I don't know. Tommy stepped out, and Tracy in here, I don't, I don't know if that's possible or not. It takes a declaration of it, it's answer, you're feeling about it. That's how we got money on Scott, and so. And I think the Methodist Church would say they had that, but I don't know that the governor would have declared it for.
Yeah, I'd just hate to see it getting, continue to get pushed further down the list, when it was so high.
Why don't we say four A, four B?
As long as it's four A, I'm good, then.
Well, I think, can we move on to him?
Yeah.
And I think we've all, we all know everybody's positions, and we can horse trade later on.
Okay, all right. Well, you, you know those five, and we're gonna, we're gonna continue to work on number one, and I guess number two at this point. All right, we can shift now into the, the ordinance changes. Which is gonna be Erica and Chuck.
I think Chuck, me, and you, Jim. If you guys wanna pull your blue sheets, you should have them in front of you. Haley stepped out as well, but she's gonna pull them up on.
We don't have, do we have this on the screen?
Mm, we, she will, but you've got it in front of you as well. Uh, there's a few things that have come up over the last six to eight months. They're coming up either from members of the public, or they've been suggested by one of you. And we just need some direction as to how we proceed. We're not really to the point where we can put, as Chuck says, pen to paper, because we don't even know what direction we need to go in. And so I'm gonna go through the ones that I think are going to be discussion-worthy, and then I've got a list of things that are really more housekeeping items, that I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of at the end. Uh, the first page that you're gonna be looking at is about food trucks and mobile food service. Uh, I did wanna define what we're talking about when we say food trucks, and that's basically a licensed motorized vehicle or a mobile food unit, which is temporarily stored on a premise where food items are sold to the general public. I think most of us know what that looks like. Uh, there were food trucks at the Taste of Carrollton. I think the three oh two truck was at the Taste of Carrollton, as, as was the Tropical Joe's, and. We do not currently allow food trucks in the City of Carrollton, in any zoning district. They're actually not addressed at all. That's kind of a really, relatively new phenomenon. It's becoming quite popular in more urban areas, and they're starting to make their way out here. A lot of communities do Food Truck Fridays, they have food truck festivals, they allow food truck parks. And we just need to know what direction we should go in. I, I put a few options under considerations. The first one is to basically allow them in designated areas, and that would be, say, like in the industrial park, Prenters Oil is a good example. Or at some of our industry where there may not be dining options for lunch. Or even something like the Bankhead Highway Quarter, where we're trying to get people to basically come back to Bankhead. That might be a way. But that, basically, to have kind of restricted areas, either by zoning district, by overlay district, where they would be permitted. The second option might be to allow them in designated lots. That's sort of like having a food truck court. So that particular consideration, I would strongly encourage you to allow that only through a special use permit, so that you guys would have a little bit of purview of where those lots might be. A good example would be an empty lot on Bankhead. I'm just gonna keep using Bankhead, but that's another option. The third option is to allow them in commercial areas, but then have distance requirements from other dining establishments. Uh, I've seen that in some ordinance, some sample ordinances that we've looked at, where they have to be a certain number of feet from another restaurant. And then the fourth option is just to allow them at city sanctioned events, like Food Truck Fridays. All of these options, I think, are viable, but one thing I would caution you about is allowing them downtown. Uh, we have, I think.
If I said that's where they want them to go.
Uh, I think they wanna go somewhere, and it doesn't necessarily, I'm sure they would love to be downtown, but I don't think that, it's, I don't think it's a deal killer, killer if they don't get to come downtown. I think they understand that you've got property owners that have invested greatly into those historic buildings. Uh, we've got a good thing going downtown, and we don't want too much of a good thing. And, um, so we wanna basically reward those property owners that have invested greatly into making downtown what it is today. Uh, and that's why I think you keep them outside of downtown unless it's something like the Taste of Carrollton or an event like that. Uh, we don't currently allow them at the AMP unless it's part of a rental where they're giving the food away. In other words, they can't set up and sell their food even at an event. So just so you guys know that. So if you've seen them at the AMP, it's because they've negotiated with whoever's renting it, and they're just giving the food away as part of, as part of their event, so. We just need some direction. Uh, I've got all sorts of rules and regulations we can move forward with as far as signage, as far as, you know, how they're gonna have to be set up to keep it to where it's done tastefully. But we just need some direction as to which one you guys wanna see.
Who's, where are you gonna say this one? Who's pushing this?
Uh, every food truck owner within a ninety-mile radius.
So where are they, but where are they wanting to go, besides the downtown area?
I was joking a little bit. Um, the, we have had, our occupational tax clerk gets a lot of inquiries about permitting food trucks, and we don't, we can't, we don't have it addressed. And it may be that you guys wanna say, we don't want them, and I, that's, that's a good answer as well.
That's where they wanna go, yeah.
Right.
Where do they want them to set up?
Um, we've had them set at once up in, in parking lots. We, we basically chase them around town. At West Georgia, they do set up at West Georgia, and we do not regulate them on campus. We stay out of their, out of their area. But they've wanted to go on Maple Street, they've wanted to go, I think they would go anywhere. They just wanna be able to be part of the community and have an opportunity to.
I like the idea of the industrial areas, like printers and stuff like that, and the other, the way I think about it is like, other industries that don't have dining options. I think that's a really great, you know, solution for some of that. I'd say it wouldn't be on a everyday sort of basis. It would be like, you know, once a month, or every week, or whatever it might be. I, I would, this is something that I've had multiple discussions about, is the log cabin or other areas next to the lake. We're trying to push for fun, community-type spaces over there, and I think having a food truck area. And that, somewhere over there, let them set up once a week, and maybe, maybe it is a food truck Friday, since it's got a nice ring to it. But whatever it is, being able to have a space for that would be awesome. Really, just kind of energizing spaces that people aren't normally going to. Because, yeah, I don't think, they're not investing in brick and mortar, but they do want to serve our population, so I like the idea of it.
Definitely like the industrial side, because there's nothing at Magallum, or something, there's nothing at Yachio. Southwars got a little bit, I guess. Trotted doesn't have a food situation.
Would that all be like, like lunch hour-type things?
Breakfast and lunch, because they're running three shifts.
So I'm wondering then, you know, for the rest of the population, having, because I think it'd be great for them. They can either walk over or.
There's just nothing over there for people to run too quickly to go get anything to eat. So anything we could help the industrial side, as far as their employees got thirty minutes to get something in, get something back out, and get back to work.
And if you'd be up at the industry, they couldn't pull over there unless the industry allowed it, so if the industry wanted them to come in there, they could do it.
I like that idea.
Or if there was a spot down there they could set up, you know, I don't know.
Would y'all like to allow it as a permitted use through the special use permit process as well, on designated lots and other zones, besides M one and M two, or no?
Yes, because I think we're, we're gonna say, here's some spaces that we're thinking of, but they're gonna find a place that they're gonna like, and I'd like for them to be able to apply for it, if they think it's a good spot for them to sell.
That way you're looking at it on a ca, and this wouldn't be a single food truck. This would be a court. Somebody would come in and apply to have a food truck court in a specific area.
But I'd also like us to say, here, here is an area that we, we allow it to occur, and.
It's gotta be on our property, though, right?
No. Well, I, I think we, it, it depends. It could be on their private property. They would just have to have the final say of it themselves.
Or the property owner, yeah.
We can allow them to allow.
Right.
To set up. But I'd love, I'd love to see it be up right there in the lake, let people go hang out, and, until somebody's ready to invest in putting a, a restaurant space there. Let them set up temporarily. Let's get some people.
There's a lot of care in space for sale.
If y'all wanna sell it.
Everything's for sale. We're waiting on the contractors to finish the diva, so. Ready to go.
That is one of the most underutilized spaces in, in the city. It's right there on the lake. I think it'd be a really great spot to energize that area. Activate that space.
Well, I absolutely think it's needed in the industrial areas.
Oh, yeah.
They, they got no place to eat, and they could, you know, any industry that won't let a given truck come in, set up in their parking lot, oh, that'd be a way to feed your folks.
I mean, you've even got industry building these, I mean, why say industry? You've got, I mean, you've got, I think Tanner's got a food truck, or they're getting one. The school system now has a food truck. They were at, at the Taste of Carrollton. So if you want lunchroom food, yeah, so.
Do they have ladies in hairnets?
I didn't, I didn't go to that particular food truck at the Taste, but, so, I don't know.
Why would I say something going off an industrial car?
So what I'm listening to is maybe allow them by right in M one and M two, and then a special use permit if somebody wants to create a food tr, food truck court, that's hard to say. And we'll put that as a permitted use on the use table. But, well, let's do a special, okay, all right.
What would it take to do, to put it over there at the log cabin? Is that part of it?
Well, that's our land, so that makes it a little easier, as far as the application process goes, so.
Do we wanna say, I guess that would have to still be an application, because.
We would still need to approve it, wouldn't we? I mean, we'd wanna follow our own rules. Give people the opportunity to give input, that's.
It's a good idea.
Erica, when you do all this, I just ask, everybody might disagree with me, that you don't do it as an omnibus modification of the U D O. That each one of these items that you have on here comes as a separate.
Resolution?
Resolution.
Okay, no, that's, and these are so different, that's probably, that's very good advice. All right, the next thing, number two, accessory dwelling units. Uh, this is something that I know I've talked with Rory about a good bit, and it's come up a few times in some of our in-town neighborhoods. Uh, some, there are some existing accessory dwelling units in our in-town neighborhoods that have just been grandfathered in forever, but, um, once again, what's an accessory dwelling unit? Uh, it's a residential unit that may be situated within an attached or detached structure located on the same tract as the principal residence. Uh, on your left-hand side, you'll see what our current ordinance allows, and basically, we allow these in ER one and ER three. That's our estate residential zoning districts. There are larger lots. Uh, the, the kicker, though, is that second bullet point. We don't allow them as basically rentals. In other words, I'm sorry, not the second bullet point, the third. Uh, it has, it has. It has to be utilized basically by visitors and relatives, and it's...so, it can't be a bona fide kind of rental property. It's got to be basically, you know, kind of...
Grown kids.
Just a support of the single family...what'd you say?
Grown kids moving back in.
Well, they can't pay you rent, so...
Stop. Don't even joke about this.
But accessory dwelling units aren't permitted in any of our smaller, single-family dwelling districts, I mean, single-family zoning districts. So, RS 10 up through RS 20, or RS 20, they're not allowed. I pulled this straight out of the city of Decatur, because they had a pretty concise ordinance, but these are just some considerations to think about. If we were to look at it, I know Decatur limits it based off of the size of the lot. They only allow one ADU per lot. This is something I've argued, I think, with Rory about over and over again, but I'm just going to throw it out there. They also require that one of the structures be owner-occupied. So, it's not just a rental situation. It's a situation where you've got the property owner on site. And I'm not going to go through all of these, but these are just some of the considerations. If you guys want us to move forward and start looking at a draft of an ordinance, we could do that. We can hold off on it. I just need some direction.
So, today, you can't print out your separate garage building to a printer?
Correct. Correct.
Or your basement, or your anything.
Even part of your house.
Even if it's part of your house. So, this would be either...
A lot of people in violation.
There's a ton of that all over.
I might be wrong.
And, like I said, there are many existing, many...what we base it on right now, we have to do a little bit of detective work. Typically, if they've got two water accounts, we have deemed them grandfathered in. And I don't know if that's the right way to handle it, but that's just one thing that we've found to be, if they've had that, then typically it's been in place for a good while. So, but there are ones that exist today in single-family districts.
I mean, I'm certainly in favor of moving forward, but Rory, tell me on why you shouldn't have to have one of the property owners present on the property.
The way I picture it is, it's just two units of property. There's one in the front, one next to it, wherever it might be. I think historically, people will say, "Oh, renters are terrible at living in spaces, and they run down the property." But as long as the property's maintained well, which we can do through other UDO and code enforcement pieces, then the level of maintenance, or the level of quality of these pieces of property, can be at a rate, or at a quality level that is...they're not going to be slums. I think what you see a lot of time is, especially close to town, there's a lot of people that are young professionals that want to live in small spaces, and they may...right now, you don't have a place for them to go. You're going to move into Carrollton Place, next to Jameson Inn, is that what that is? There's not many places for you to rent. So, what this does is, without having to build a bunch of apartment complexes, it allows for people to move into town, live close to town, without having to purchase. I think of the amount of people that are, I don't know, nurses, or schoolteachers, or whatever it might be, that are looking to live in town, they don't have a place to live. We shouldn't force them, then, just to purchase, and I don't think we can, with the property prices, the way they are at this point. So, instead of it just being a, "Let's make sure that they live in apartments," this is another way for them to live. And I think it's a great opportunity, because, as we know, neighbors call on their neighbors and say, "Hey, they're not doing this thing right. They're not doing that thing right." We'll get the calls. So, if there is something wrong, we'll get a call about it. But what we can do in the design standards and building standards is just make them so that they are either matching the architecture and details of the original home. They've got to be no bigger, they've all that sort of stuff. So, you actually get a quality thing. It's not just like a metal shack getting popped up in the backyard, which I think is what we're...maybe not seeing metal shack, but we're seeing like, pretty terrible garages with people living in them. So, this would actually allow us to regulate it.
What about, though, if we were to pass something like this, neighborhood covenants, POA covenants, what trumps what there?
The POA, if they have that in their area, yeah.
The covenants?
Would trump it, yeah.
Would trump whatever we do here.
And we don't regulate any covenants.
So, there...
Right. I just didn't...I want to make sure whatever path they couldn't fill a POA, if the city didn't.
No, like, if we said, "Hey, you can do this," Oak Mountain wouldn't be allowed to just pop up a bunch of these.
So, let's just let Erica go ahead and do some exploration. Let's just don't come back with some recommendations to us, other than this. 800 square feet is, to me, is a little large. 300 square feet, 400 square feet might be the max, I mean.
Like a 1-1 type of space?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, can you pursue that a little bit more? And come back and we'll beat it out a little bit more.
All right. The next item, I think, is near and dear to...I think I've gotten complaints from almost everyone sitting at all of these tables about temporary signs at one point or another. In our temporary, in our unified development ordinance, we define temporary signs as real estate signs, construction signs, real estate directional signs, weekend directional signs, and then that last one is the one we get the most complaints for, and that's special event signs. They can either be ground signs, they can be banners. All signs that are permitted should always be out of the public right of way. I know some that we get complaints about are in the public right of way, and we have been able to, I think, effectively handle those. Currently, our ordinance allows the following signs without the issuance of a permit.
Okay, let's talk about Maple Street real quick.
Okay.
So, you drive down Maple Street, and you see all these signs, the banners, at the gasoline stations, I forget what they say.
Sale, I'm sure.
Whatever. So, I don't see how they fall in any of these categories.
They would fall in basically a special event temporary sign. So, if you're...
And how long does that event get to last? 30, 60 days?
Well, our ordinance is a little bit contradictory. Even if y'all want to keep it the way we've got it, we've got to fix ordinance, because in one section, there's special events, you can have 15 days in a six-month period. In one section, you can have 60 days in a 12-month period. We use the more restrictive of those two at this point. At this moment, we use the more restrictive. So, 15 days in a six-month period, and that's in the provision for our special events. So, that would be sales. Maple Street's a good example, because there are a lot of violations. We currently require them to pay $1 per sign when they get the permits. Those special event signs are the only ones that we require permits for. So, real estate signs, political signs, construction signs, all of those are not required to have a permit, and we are absolutely not suggesting that that change at all. So, the focus, the primary focus of this discussion really needs to be with those special event signs. Some considerations. One is to place a limit on the number of temporary sign permits you can have. Right now, somebody can come and get a permit for 20 signs, and they're boop, 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 you know, all along the right of way. And, you know, a lot of communities limit that. They'll allow them to have one, and that could be a ground sign, or that could be a banner. Some communities, I suggested that possibly we do two signs, per right of...I mean, per road frontage. But that's just up to you guys and how y'all want to handle it.
Have you seen any that do charge per square foot of the sign? Like, for a yard sign, it might be 30 bucks, or whatever it is. But then, if you're going to go with that, one that says hot dogs or ice cream sandwiches, which we kind of see on different places, you charge a little bit more.
So, our permanent signs, that's how we calculate the permit fee, is by square foot. I've not seen it, but I also...I've looked at a few different ordinances when it comes to temporary signs. I've seen it by the sign. I'm suggesting a $30 flat fee, because it's easy to regulate, and we don't have to worry about folks fudging. So, it's just $30 if you want a temporary sign. The...
I'm saying a lot of trailer signs, and I don't see that is mobile on here.
What do you mean by trailer signs?
In the back of someone's truck?
Huh?
In the back of someone's...
It's like on a trailer, but it's like a little small billboard.
They drive around.
Those would be considered temporary signs.
I'd be a temporary sign.
Yeah, just because they're on, I believe, would you not?
Yeah, I mean, I think the ordinance is meant to talk...I mean, I think it really speaks to signs that are put in front of a business, as opposed to something that people ride around. I mean, I don't know...
I mean, I'm talking about trailer signs, like, there's a lot on Maple Street, come up over at Millamush Room, and...
That they just station people banging in.
Yeah, yes, I would agree.
And we can clarify that in the ordinance, so that there's no question.
That's what I'm referring to, was the trailer signs. You know, they don't matter on a trailer, they're mobile, but a mobile sign doesn't have a categorize, category.
Okay.
Character.
We will include those.
We're going to keep allowing them, or...
Make it a temporary piece.
I think they could be viewed as a temporary sign, if they want to use that as their temporary sign for their 15 days and 6 months, if that's the timeframe you guys choose. I'll tell you, when we start reaching out to these businesses, you're going to hear from folks that had the opportunity to get to go through this whenever Athens cracked down on their sign ordinance, their temporary sign ordinance. And what we did, and actually what I'm suggesting, is we actually impounded signs that were in the right of way, and if they wanted them back, they had to pay $30 to get them back. Because you see a lot of special event signs for 5Ks, for golf tournaments, for, you know...
Yard sales.
Yard sales, for all these things are in the right of way. And if they're in the right of way, we want to go ahead and be able to pull them up, impound them. If we have to keep them for 30 days, we'll tag them, and then we can dispose of them after 30 days. But that's going to be the quick...because we're out in the field. I mean, I'm out in the field, Tommy, I mean, that whole group is out in the field, and we can all participate in collecting them.
You're going to do the same thing with political signs?
What'd you say?
You're going to do the same thing with political signs?
No, political signs, they have their own separate set of provisions, and we're not suggesting that we do anything with political signs right now. So, they can't be in the right of way.
Other than what it says now.
Right. They can't be in the right of way, but we're not suggesting anything different on those.
I think it's a great way to get rid of some clutter.
What about the use of streamers and balloons? That's another one. I'm sorry, we get these questions?
Define...I mean, I know everybody in the room knows what a streamer balloon is, but tell me what a streamer balloon is, what you're envisioning a streamer balloon is.
A streamer is typically a long string with flags on it, that they'll hang from maybe light pole, light pole. Balloons, you'll see sometimes attached to...
Car dealerships.
Car dealerships. You'll see them attached to, you know, if somebody's having a special event, they'll attach them to their primary sign. I mean...
But you're not talking about the big, massive balloons. You see car dealerships.
I am. I'm actually...I'm talking about all of it. And the reason why is because we get these questions, and I just need to know if y'all want to continue to allow them. We can allow an exception for car dealerships. I don't really care. I just need to...we need to be able to define it in the...
I mean, we're going to include a ton of balloon on it, antenna sitting on a car that's in his lot for sale. Is that going to be also inclusive of that?
What did you say?
Like, Mike Beller Walker, inside their property line, behind the right of way. Are we going to say that they can't tie balloons on antennas of certain cars they're trying to spearhead?
We can say whatever. We just need direction. That's all we...
I guess if then it goes to, are they allowed to put the spotlight up and the smoke machines, you know?
And you also have the little things that...
The clammy guy.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking, about streamers.
I would...I'd like for us to go too far, and then backpedal based on how hard the pushback...
Pushback, huh?
The folks in the press are going to write that paper tomorrow.
Okay. Does that mean you don't want to allow them?
Yes. No streamers, yeah.
As far as the time period, like I said, we've been doing 15 consecutive days in a six-month period, because that's the more restrictive in our ordinance provisions. Is that...that means they wouldn't be able to get but one permit, basically.
Every six months.
Every six months, so.
Yeah, we're trying to reduce all that clutter that's there.
You've got to do a balancing test with the merchants.
Well, they're going to say they need it.
Well, they otherwise buy licensed. They all buy a business license every year.
I just, Rory, my dad, having his Verizon stores, he was adamant that his...
The banners sold.
...soul phones, they brought people in. And he was irritable at cities that micromanaged it, and got rid of them. I hear what you're saying. You know I'm in agreement with you, but if we just have to have some sort of balancing test.
I guess the way I think about it is, it's the same thing with every gas station needs a 40-foot tall sign.
Yeah.
But, because that's how they're going to sell gas. They're going to say what they need to, but at some point, we've got to say, "What do we want in the city?"
I mean, there's a laundry pole flyer up there on Bankhead, next to my building, that's been aggravating me ever since I cleared up, so...
Sounds like you're on board, though.
I think it's been on there for a couple of years now.
Perfect.
So, how much correction do you need, specific correction? I mean, I like your considerations.
I'm okay with the 15 consecutive, every six months, and I think, for right now, and I think we can have it as a point during...
Quarterly?
That would be 30 days. That would be 30 in six months, basically, if we did it quarterly.
Quarterly.
No, more than 15 consecutive, 30 days?
And then the money that we get in from all of these can go towards beautification and cleanup of those corridors?
I think he's saying 15, you know, 90 days.
Oh, okay. Instead of 30 and 60. I mean, 30 in six months. Okay.
So, you could have up to four a year, with each one of which can exceed 15 days.
That would give them Christmas, that'd give them Valentine's, that'd give them something, some kind of 4th of July.
Would y'all be comfortable saying four a year? It's going to be easier for us to regulate versus doing...
30 days every six months.
Every...yeah. Is that okay?
And that they've got to remove them themselves?
Right.
All that sort of stuff.
Moving on. Hey, will you call up those pictures for me? This next item is another one that's come up. It's actually come up in some of our corridor committee meetings, and it's regarding paving. As you probably all well know by now, our design standards in our UDO, we have minimum requirements for landscaping, tree canopy, lot coverage, we have buffer requirements, we have landscape strip requirements to the right of way. All of these things are impacted by resurfacing at times. And the problem that we're running into is we're catching it after the fact. And so, I have a couple of pictures I wanted to kind of show you, and I will tell you, this was done, I think we determined about a year and a half ago, maybe? Not...we were trying to...two years ago? And the current property owner was not the property owner that did this. So, Haley, will you show a couple of the pictures? That's another site, and it's completely just no landscape islands, no nothing. I mean, it's scraped clean. One more time? Keep going. This is another one that's a little more recent, where there was a landscape island, and we basically lost that, because we didn't realize they paved it. And what we would like to do, in order for us to properly, you know, kind of have a proper plan review before this work is completed, we have a lot better chance at success if we let the property owners know before they do the work, versus going after them after they've already spent the money, if we require a paving permit. This paving permit would give us an opportunity to do some sort of review of what they're proposing. A couple of considerations if we do require this paving permit, I think this will be something you'll hear about, but I do want to talk to you about why we need it. This obviously doesn't look good, and, like I said, we don't want folks to spend money and then them having to come back and fix something they didn't even know they were doing anything wrong with. A couple of the things, only commercial properties would be subject to the permit, so no single-family residential. We would have a small fee, but just something for administrative costs. We're not trying to make money off of this. We're really just wanting an opportunity to get to review their plans. And then also, in regards to non-conforming parking lots, because we have a lot of those that don't meet our current standards, we would allow maintenance and resurfacing of those. We wouldn't allow expansion of them. And what I mean by that is, you know, if they're going to repair a parking lot that doesn't meet the code, we're going to let them pave and resurface their parking lot that doesn't meet the code. What we wouldn't let them do is expand it without bringing it into conformity. Those are the suggestions I have. We just need to move forward with this, and we wanted to make sure you guys were...had a full understanding of why we would require it, first off, and then, secondly, that it is needed, if we're going to properly administer the ordinance.
This picture here was already that way.
There was actually landscaping in that island.
There was landscaping there.
Well, they had some plants up there at one time, and...
Well, we got it. We're going to clean it up a little better, because we also got into whether or not potted plants counted as landscaping. Anyway, it's a long story, but I think the potted plants died.
Do other cities have paving permits?
Have what?
Do other cities have paving permits?
I believe they do, because Douglasville, don't y'all do a...or I'm pointing at you... I believe they do, because Douglasville, don't y'all do a, or I'm pointing at you, but the, they do a impact fee on paving, don't they?
The water authority does.
Right, I think there's some sort of permitting process.
Whose idea was it for the paving permit? Because I like it.
Yeah, well, then it was mine.
Well, good. I didn't know if it was yours or Chuck's.
It wasn't my idea, actually, we were talking, Haley does a lot of plan review. And she was running into issues with, uh, look, we're catching these people after the fact, they don't even know they've done anything wrong. And we're just trying to, we're trying to help them help themselves.
But just know this, because you're gonna get a little pushback on it, and, and we do need to clean this stuff up. But there are landscaping requirements, there are tree ordinance requirements, and they haven't been enforced. And they've been in there since, what, about '07? And again, if somebody's gonna pave a lot, we don't even know if there's no way to enforce it. But just know that's gonna be a part of this, and you may hear some, some noise about that.
I got a question about that.
But I, I will tell you, she's gone through the tree ordinance with me. It looks oppressive, it's not. It's not that bad. And what looks like tons and tons of trees on the lot will be three or four. So just don't let it, if, if somebody brings it before you, don't let it frighten you, because it's just not that tough.
Yeah, we say we can't enforce something after they've done it. Why not? Why can't we say, hey, go fix this thing you've done? And what's to say then, if they've, if they didn't know there was a permit required to do it, how are we gonna enforce them to change it after the fact?
Well, the permit will tell the papers, there's not that many of them. We'll say you gotta have, it's just like we do sign companies, the way, the way you get their attention areas, there's just not that many sign companies, and you tell them.
It's not that we can't, I'm gonna use them as an example. You know, they came in and they did a, you know, they got a permit to do the building. I almost feel like it's on us that we didn't tell them. It's, it's my fault. And, you know, because we didn't know they were gonna be doing this work. And I'll, I'll tell you, I hate going back to somebody and saying, I screwed up, but oh, by the way, all that money you just spent, go pull it out. I don't like to do that.
So you wanna get them on the front side?
I wanna catch them before they do it, so.
Go ahead.
All right, we had a couple of things as far as single-family and townhouse design standards. Uh, one thing that we've discussed, I think in actually some council meetings, is our minimum square footage for single-family residences and townhouses. Uh, there's been a discussion about reducing that square footage. Right now, it's at 1,250 square feet. And we have talked about reducing it to something under 1,000, but not tiny home size, is what I have heard from this group, I guess I should say. Um, we're at 800 square feet. Y'all just tell me if y'all want to move forward with this. Uh, this would allow some flexibility in design. I think that you've got kind of a trend to do smaller homes. If we do that, we've also included a provision to basically allow a smaller lot size, which would be an 8,000-square-foot lot size. Uh, there wouldn't be anything on the map, but we would at least offer it as an option for rezoning, which would better suit the 1,250-square-foot.
Did we let John Denny do something smaller on Cottage Hill? What did he, what was he letting go to?
Did he get down to nine or eight? He had the small, he had like just 10 or so that were small home lots that were.
Was it 1,050 or something?
No, it was smaller, it was smaller than that. I think it 900. Yeah, I think it was 900. But I'll tell you, I think that they are not exercising that option, to the best of my knowledge.
Didn't I hear one time before, when back in 16, that 1,250 was about the smallest square foot we'd come out of Texas with, or servicing?
I don't remember that. The property values have gotten so high now that we're over, almost any single-family home is over that threshold, where we're breaking, uh, breaking even on service. I don't know that you can build. I, I, I don't, you know, I'm hearing numbers that just frighten me on construction costs, so.
They have gotten out of range.
And I know, again, I go back to John's, and the numbers I'm hearing are like three, over 350 for those homes.
I'd like the third item to get stripped, stricken from the.
We're not there yet. We're not there, we'll talk about that in a second. Let's talk about square footage. Do y'all want to see this as a, as a resolution?
Yes.
To allow for smaller homes?
I'm okay with it.
Is 800 square feet the magic number? I mean, is that, are you guys?
That's pretty little.
It is small, but we've had some.
There's homes in, near downtown, like in my ward, that are roughly that size.
There are houses out there?
Like a two-bed, one-bath.
Those meal houses, for 800?
Yeah, about.
How, how old are they?
1910, 1920? And there's people in them.
Yeah, I mean, but they were built way back when, so.
And I, no, I think what we're seeing is a move back towards.
Smaller houses?
Yeah, smaller places.
We're not trying to do tiny houses, all right?
No, tiny house.
Tiny house, 400?
No, tiny houses, you'll see tiny houses that are 200 square feet.
That's for all.
But.
Y'all let me know when y'all pass.
Those are typically on axles, but.
How are you gonna break out the other section?
Do you have developers submit you want to do 800?
We actually have talked to some developers about smaller homes.
800, 8,000?
Well, we talked to John about 900, um, but.
You just said that, I'm sorry.
Right, yeah.
I've heard other people say, hey, what about doing a smaller than, smaller than eight? But the most amount of people I hear actually living in something smaller than eight want to get out of there after they've been in there for too long.
That's just a 20 by 40.
It's small.
That's a garage.
I know, I've lived in a space smaller than that, uh, you know, as a duplex in college and stuff like that.
There are a lot of apartments, obviously, that are that size. And folks don't necessarily want to live in an apartment combination, but still like the smaller space. I will say that. Um, I mean, you'll see, Tim, I think you said your daughter lives in something smaller.
About 800.
Yeah.
But that's in a complex, right?
That's in a, probably a mid-rise or high-rise, if I had to guess.
What about like fourplexes and low-rises? Would that be, that would be more multifamily?
That's multifamily, so.
So you're, you're proposing to create an R8 zoning district for this?
Um, we would put it on the map, just like we've done some of the others. Uh, so you guys would have to zone it to R8. But that lot size is gonna be probably better suited for the smaller homes. Um, it's just something to consider. We don't have to do it. We can do the reduced home size and leave the, you know, leave the zoning district alone.
And the vinyl is me, I'll tell you, there's, there is high-quality vinyl that's a better product than, than something that's gotta be painted. And it's more forgiving, and it, it's not a bead of caulk keeping out water, so I just think that's something.
I will say that I have, I have seen a lot of houses being revonaled. I was, since we passed that, they go in and knock them out in two days, and they're gone, and nobody even notices them.
And if it's got vinyl, they can put, they can do.
This is woodhouses that got wrapped in vinyl.
In town?
In town.
Really?
I can show you four right now, but I know.
Wow.
Senator Coogan.
And the painting contractors have gotten so outrageous. Folks can't, they can vinyl cheaper money than they can have it painted.
Well, that's just, if, if it's neglected, it can be cleaned up easier if it's vinyl. If it's neglected, the paint, it'll rot down on them.
I mean, the wood's rotten, they have to replace wood, and the painting contractors are behind, and nobody wants to paint anymore.
And I don't want low-end vinyl at all. I'm talking about, you know, set some standard where it's a higher grade, but, uh, and I'm not gonna lose any sleep on it either way, I just think it's something y'all ought to think about.
You guys know where I stand on vinyl?
Yeah.
Well, you don't like to do, even do stickers, right?
Nope.
Y'all wanna sleep on that one?
I sleep on it.
Not the vinyl, but the size in there, I mean, all of it.
Yeah.
Come back on it.
I like the size of this and this zoning too.
Yeah, the size is a problem, and. I'm okay with the vinyl, but I'm not gonna fight over it. Matt, what, are you okay with it?
It's still kind of Roy's camp, but I think there is high-quality vinyl out there. But I thought we established that the vinyl was the same cost as the hardy plank.
Yeah, I think what it is, is upkeep. What Tim said, is if, if a place isn't maintained for 10 years, you can pressure wash it down, and it's good and back to normal again, and.
I'll keep an open mind on it, but.
And again, I'm, it's not a big deal to me.
Not to give you extra points on your side there.
Well, I mean, I, I'm not losing sleep over it.
Well, it makes so many different, you know, styles and bats, and, you know, it's, it's not shingles, and, I mean, they can dress it up pretty quick, and. I've got a lot of people growling at me about the fact that we didn't do that, so. All this old regular houses, not apartments, so to speak. I still don't have a problem with it, not being on apartments, but I really don't have a problem with that aspect. I just, for somebody can afford to put vinyl up, they like to paint it and maintain it, rather than wash it off. Hey, I got vinyl on my.
And we do allow it with the softens.
You got vinyl on your home?
That's one thing, that's, that's still currently permitted.
My dog has a.
Nobody even notices it.
All right, moving on. Uh, the next item, the next page. This is something that we've, uh, we've been addressing, and we've been addressing it from the perspective of overgrown lots in residential primarily. Uh, but this is another thing that's come up with, I know Tim's talked with folks about how we basically require folks to maintain their lots, and how, and this also includes commercial properties.
And we just need to know how aggressive you want us to be. And what I'm hearing from most of you individually is very. And we have, I've talked to the codes enforcement people, and they said they won't need additional help to do this. But do you wanna, do you want them out there with a tape measure saying, if it's commercial, don't let it get higher than four inches?
Well, can't we just say reasonable? Reasonable? Can we use that word, Chuck? Reasonably overgrown?
I guess, I guess we want to know what that means.
It becomes an issue for enforcement, and then, you know, people take issue with it, then we have to find. Well, my only thing, and I think it's something you've said to me, is if we want to say, here's what you've gotta do, everybody, we better be doing it ourselves. So any, if we say six inches or whatever it might be, we, we better be cutting any spot that we, and I think we do a great job at it, it's more good.
Yeah, I think we do a good job.
You know, I had a very nice customer come in, it was very complimentary of, of, you know, so many things around the city. And he said, I wish you guys would do that. He lived at Heritage Hills, and he said, I, he said, I lived in Omaha, and they did this, and he said, and you need to be harder on commercial than you are residential. But, uh, I think he said on residential, maybe, was it six or eight inches? I don't know the size that it could go when commercial is four.
Currently, ours is 12 inches.
So.
Um, so about 11, they get a ladder.
And then there, there are more things to think about, and we can come back to you with recommendations on this. But let's say it's a vacant lot in a platted subdivision, do you want it mowed? Do you want it mowed back to the, you know, so far back from the edge of the road? Uh, if there are trees all over it, I don't think somebody needs to get out there. And we talked about that a lot around, and mow around the trees, that's just silly. So, we've not defined that here, but I guess, I guess I would like to know your philosophy. Do you want us to tighten up, or are you happy with what we're doing?
Tighten up is my obsession.
Okay. Why don't we come back with a recommendation then?
Just one of four people, I appreciate you.
I, I agree.
Well, he'd already said it.
I, I get complaints about.
I mean, is there a way to leg against the property and, and not tag it to the water bills?
I mean, that's essentially how the current ordinance works, but.
I mean, if they don't have a water tap there, how you gonna tie it to the water bill?
Well, we tie it to the.
I just put that in there. I don't even know that, that, I showed that to Tim before. We were just trying to talk about basically how we might.
Recover our money.
Recover our money. Um, if we were to hire someone to go in and, and cut for, there, there may be some legal implications that we haven't considered. We just basically want to know, how aggressive do you want us to come back with you?
I definitely want to make sure there are warnings, you know, beforehand, not just all of a sudden my grass is mowed, and I'm getting a bill in the mail.
I will tell you, the warnings we get for grass are pretty tight. I mean, I think it's five days, Tommy. Doesn't he give about five days? Just because you wait two weeks, it's four times as bad, you know, during the summer, I mean, so.
You know, there's some lots in Jerryl and here to talk about, that he's called us about a lot of them. Uh, they're everywhere, but certainly on, in some of the areas he's calling me about where, you know, they've got a trailer off a road tractor sitting there with junk in it or whatever. We just kind of want to know your philosophy, and if you tell us to tighten it up, we'll, we'll come back with specifics that you can vote on, and we'll do just that.
Sounds good.
Well, I personally got one on Willie Nor Street, so I can't get to it.
Well, I didn't know.
Well, I was supposed to go out there with me, so I can get it.
Oh, really? Is it that bad?
Uh, I got run off with a bush axe.
Well, we can send police over there.
Had to get the police over to get me off.
I think this last one Chuck's gonna handle.
There's been, uh.
It's his fault.
Yeah.
Just kidding.
That's just life, you get credit for things you don't deserve, and you get blamed for things you didn't do.
And I mentioned Hurd County being such a.
L S U, baby.
Anyhow. If y'all recall, we made an except, you know, the city for years prohibited open containers in public areas. Uh, we made an exception to that rule to allow, you know, open containers in the downtown area until 2:30 in the morning. But let's see, I mean, I can't, am I getting that right? Is there a current time limit, Joel?
No, no.
You're the attorney, man.
Do you want me to do this?
So, the proposal would be to establish a time limit on having open containers. Uh, and what we talked about is you can currently purchase alcohol until 1:30 in the morning on most mornings. You can consume it on the premises until 2 o'clock. That we would prohibit open containers on the square in the public areas starting at 2:30. So you couldn't be out there at 4 o'clock in the morning. I don't mean to speak for Joel, but I think the idea from an enforcement standpoint is we've got people that are out there that are drinking on the square until the wee hours in the morning, whether they purchased the alcohol from a downtown establishment or not. And this would give us a way to get them off the, the square at a, you know, reasonable hour. And what we would propose is 2:30, you could always come back in later on and tighten it up if that didn't, you know, address the issue.
And I'm, and I'm fine with that, but why would we not? If they, if they can't buy after 1:30, why wouldn't we just stop at 2?
We actually met with the restaurants. Uh, we invited all the downtown restaurants to a meeting, but we had, how many did we have show up? About four? Um, and then I actually spoke with some others individually that did not show up. And their biggest concern was that basically there wouldn't be any sort of buffer, because last call was at two, at 1:30, but you can get two drinks. And it gives them time to basically consume whatever they've purchased. The restaurants were, were absolutely in favor of 2:30. We wanted to, we can always tighten up, but we, everybody kind of agreed to that, if that makes sense. Um, I think the police officers agreed to 2:30 too, that that would at least help. And it may not be tight enough, it may be that we do have to come back, but that's.
A good way to look at it to start. We didn't want to encourage anybody to just jump in their car and leave if they're under the influence. Sometimes it takes a while for them to get a ride up there. In Texas, we only like, like make two or three runs at a time a night, so.
And this is just.
2:30 was a good compromise with the owner.
It's just open container, it's not trying to kick them off the square or anything like that.
No, it's, it's not any sort of curfew, it's just a matter of, you know, we've got folks up there at 5 o'clock in the morning drinking.
Really?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not one of them, but yes, apparently so.
Surprisingly enough, you're not one of them.
But, uh, it, it, and there's fights, uh, there's all sorts of, of issues that come with that. The intention behind the ordinance was to, uh, you know, create an atmosphere that was kind of a courtyard-type, you know, courtyard-type atmosphere where folks were buying from the restaurants. People are obviously not buying from the restaurants at 5 o'clock in the morning. No one really benefits, I feel like, um, having folks up there that late drinking.
I'm okay with starting at 2:30, cutting it off at 2:30.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what, what's written, yeah, absolutely.
What time is it in the morning? I guess Wednesday. I guess when it's.
Seven AM?
Places that, is it serving?
I think it's eleven, I think.
I thought that was on Sunday.
Now, it's twelve-thirty on Sunday.
Yeah, on Sunday.
Eleven? There's a minute seven.
I'm doing the week month of Saturday and twelve-thirty on Sunday.
All right, the last thing. These are more, and Tim just wanted me to kinda give this to you guys, I'm gonna run through these very, very quickly.
These are just cleanup.
These are cleanups that we're gonna be doing, that you're gonna see. And I wanna ask, if it's okay, I wouldn't mind consolidating these into kind of an omnibus resolution, unless there's one you want us to pull off, we can talk about that. Real quickly, our daycare facilities ordinance is very confusing, and so we're gonna clean that up a little bit. There's not gonna be really any change, noticeable change to what's permitted and what's allowed, it's just gonna clean it up from our perspective, and it will help folks that are in that industry better understand our ordinance, because we don't understand our ordinance. The personal care homes, there's a requirement for fences. We want to require that, however, we want to give the city manager the authority to waive that, if possible. There are certain circumstances where it's not needed.
We had Bobby Holcomb, who y'all all know, do a home for mentally impaired, and he said a fence just made it seem like a prison, and we're trying to mainstream folks, and it just wasn't the right way to treat them, so that's really where that came from.
The two houses on Norbanger?
Yeah, I think so.
And I'm just gonna run through these real quickly. The standards for lot area, the maximum percent of lot covered. Currently, commercial is fifty-five percent, and that includes everything. Right now, we're just reviewing it based off of rooftops and not everything, and so we're gonna clean that up, define what lot coverage is, and we will wind up increasing commercial slightly from fifty-five percent, and we're gonna increase industrial slightly from fifty percent. Design standards, all, currently all buildings located within a hundred feet of a street have to incorporate front-entry porches that are oriented towards the street, and we want to incorporate front-entry porches on all buildings. Just because they're within the site, we want them to still look inviting and have some aesthetic qualities. There's a little bit of a contradiction in our sidewalk standards. Right now, there's a sidewalk requirement in non-residential, so in your commercial areas of six feet, but then in section six dot twelve, under sidewalks, we allow five-foot sidewalks, so we're gonna clean that up and keep that at six feet for commercial, and then at five feet for residential, unless you wanna see something differently.
Six feet's about all anybody can walk side by side down.
Yeah. And we can make residential six feet.
I don't think residential, that's just mostly, no. Let's let residential stay at five.
Design standards, we have a provision that talks about buildings that are open to the public have a different design standard than buildings that are not open to the public. We need to define what is considered open to the public. Is it the office space, or is it actual, you know, members of the public coming to visit? And it, too, also has a sidewalk requirement of six feet. We need to modify our tree canopy table to make provisions for the multifamily redevelopment overlay. With that particular, in that particular district, we found that, you know, our first project that we were working with on Campus Walk, they were basically unable to meet, and they were doing a good job, but they were unable to meet that tree canopy requirement because they were looking at existing impervious surface, and they didn't have any, you know, enough existing tree canopy or retained tree canopy to meet the needs. And so we're gonna need to fix that to better accommodate that particular application. Accessory structures right now only have a fifteen-foot high, height maximum. We need to, we're gonna increase that as well. And then, like I said, fences section, we wanna clarify for uses in all other districts. We're actually gonna clarify what other means, the word other means. And then, we had our first appeal from the Board of Development Appeals, a Board of Development Appeals decision, and we need to fix how someone makes an appeal.
But it's.
It does, but it has to follow the writ of certiorari process to go into Superior Court, and that's by case law. And we just need to, what we currently provide is that it goes into Superior Court, but